So, we will get started on that. And if everyone will please stand for the invocation and Commissioner Jordan will lead the invocation.
Yes, me. Father would come this morning thanking you Lord for blessing us to be able to come out and conduct the business of the county. And Lord we just thank you for all your blessings upon this nation, our state and the county of Gates County. And Lord we just ask now that your blessed decisions are made and we ask you blessed citizens of the county. And Lord we thank you for the privilege of serving in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. At this time I want to call the regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners to order on June 6, 2018. The first item on our agenda is approval of the amendments from April 25, 2018, May...
May 2nd.
May 2nd and then there's one on 2018 and May 21, 2018. Are there any corrections to the amendments?
I'm chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments as indicated with the noted corrections that's been submitted.
Okay. A motion's been made to approve the amendments as previous corrected.
Second motion.
Motion's been made properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then, the next item on the agenda is the agenda adjustments. And I have a couple under new business. Number eight, budget amendments, it's that time of year. We need to make some budget amendments, 36, 37, and 38. And number nine, as going through our policy manual, we need to have a discussion on insurance policy. That is number nine. Is there any one thing else to be needed to be added? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved, second.
A motion's been made properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those...
And there's no closed session.
Oh, and there is no closed session today. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, none, either nights delegation or nights delegations. Okay, administrative reports, county manager.
And, you know, I didn't have the report. I have the report listed separately.
Okay. I knew I had read it on the email, but I didn't have it printed. Okay.
Just take a moment, pull it up. This is for, this is for April 17 through May 22. Much of April May was spent finalizing evaluations and preparing the fiscal year 19 budget. As for the courthouse roof, work is continuing on the roof and estimated completion is the end of May. However, this June is still not completed. Central middle school update. Ms. Hox, Sheriff Hopper and I met with LGC representatives along with Mitch Bruglio with Davenport on April 26 to discuss the central middle school project. The RFP for bank financing was released by Davenport at the beginning of May. Proposals are due May 21. A public hearing is scheduled for the financing as required by the LGC on June 6. Work is progressing on the wastewater project and construction has begun in the west wing of historic courthouse. On April 25, the regional planning organization met in Hartford. Many grants were approved. Local input for the scoring of projects was discussed and approved. Updates were provided by DOT in the ferry division. Updates on projects to be completed in Gates County within the next two years include the bridge at the Chuan Gates line will be replaced. The estimated completion date is mid-February of 2018. Between now and June 2019, a portion of Highway 32 of the Chuan Gates line will be resurfaced. Highway 37 from Gatesville to the Highway 13 intersection will also be resurfaced. On May 1, the Alamoor RC&amp;D met to approve the fiscal year 19 budget interview project. Gatesville Park at Venice Creek will be renovated over the next year. On May 4, the PCG landfill committee met to approve the fiscal year 19 budget and discuss issues related to landfills. Many of the same topics were discussed at the Alamoor Regional Solid Waste Management Authority meeting which followed. There are many House and Senate bills still being considered in Raleigh that could potentially affect landfills. The market for recycling is becoming increasingly tighter. This has resulted in the recycling toughening that the Alamoor Regional Solid Waste Management Authority contracts with to begin sending bills even though our contract states we are not to pay them for recycling. Fees continue to increase. On May 9, the Juvenile Prime Prevention Council met to approve the fiscal year 19 county plan as required by the state and program reports were provided. Do you have any questions?
The courthouse roof here, what is, what is the projected date of completion on?
I believe it is next week what they are supposed to come back and do some more work on what they call the penthouse, which is the room that encloses the large HVAC unit. And there has been some leaking from some flashing that was not sealed, so they still have to fix that. Once that's done, then it has to be tested and approved by another company and that's out of the contract so that it meets manufacturer standards. So I'm anticipating the end of June when Alice finally set it up.
Be nice to, that can be pleased so we can work on fixing the ceilings in the building.
Regarding the PCG landfill, it's somewhere that site being told not to put plastic bottles in the recycling bin. Have you heard anything about that?
No, they're still encouraging everyone to recycle. That can be something I can send to Angel.
Well, that's what's being passed out, so we need to check on that. Plastic water bottles, don't put them in the recycling anymore.
Do they have a sign that says that or they're just forwarding?
I'm not sure if there's a sign, but that's what is related to it. I haven't been helping personally.
I wonder what type of plastic bottles.
Well, they're saying water bottles. I asked the same question, what, as far as things like detergent bottles and large plastic bottles. And so it seems that you can still put those in there, but water bottles, stainless glass, they're saying not to put them in, put them in regular trash disposal.
I'll, I'll try to ask Angel to discuss that with all of her attendance.
And it's different thing.
Right.
Makes you aware.
Yeah, correct.
Correct.
It's not like we don't need to forward that, those comments until we find out that's the case out there.
And now, I did see on the newsletter, one of our gentlemen had celebrated, I think many years with the solid waste, one of the recycled schools, one in Redug.
Eight or 10 of them.
I thought the newsletter is informative and recognize that most people have worked there for a period of time. Okay, next, tax and finance. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
Good morning, everyone. An opportunity to see that collector's report for the month of May or any specific or comments on there?
Seems like everything is proceeding well with the collections.
It is, yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. The bulk of the month was spent with some people coming through trying to resolve paying their 17 or any other year, if you will. Some people wait to get their income tax refund, of course, and come by and see us. And of course, we've got a little bit of delinquency on that when that happens, but yes ma'am, business as usual for us with the collections. I will say the bulk of May and probably into June will be bombarded, the board with some emails regarding foreclosure. That has kind of taken suit here as we file some, some cases are coming up in the next couple of weeks or so. That's consumed a little bit of time, as she just added those charges to those accounts with all those fees. I wanted to make the board aware of those cases pending in case, and the board got any phone calls naturally and just keep the board informed of what we're doing. So that's, that's been a bulk of our activity actually in this last month getting moved so scheduled and with Mark Bardele's visit in May. He did visit twice, he did a follow-up visit, of course, with Mr. Bardele, his son, and member of staff, Henley Green with Zacchaeus. He spent that good bulk of time next door in the deeds office pulling, researching, trying to put the dots all together for some of these, these cases. As you saw in some reporting, some of these are going to move forward, about more than a third, we hope, with the first phase of activity. I'll say the more easier accounts and then into the more difficult ones. So I appreciate the board's patience for that moving forward. So we definitely expect three are scheduled on the docket for district court as I've sent that information to you for, I believe it's June 18. I believe it's that Monday with the scheduling. I may have said June 14, but I think that actual date is that Monday, the 18th for district court, so.
I noticed several that have very low value on the list that we received. Some $28,000, less than half acre of land, that sort of thing. Was sometimes in position where it costs more to value both of those on it than does we're going to actually get out of property.
Oh, well, yes, that's a good observation. Moving forward with those cases actually submitted for foreclosure, well, we'll do a more, I'll say a more pertinent review, but there again, who is to say that contiguous or jointing landowner perhaps would not want that property? So we may be reluctant to foreclose when actually, you know, it could be a contiguous tract joining with another tract. So it's difficult to say, you know, no, we don't want to send that for foreclosure because we have been approached by several taxpayers who are interested for that reason. It may be a less desirable tract in and of itself, which is a good point, but you know, when you have those taxpayers wanting it for whatever reason. So that, that is the keen observation, what parcels really to be used at due diligence and really not to send. We do have some of those, as I mentioned, that we are working with the taxpayer and they may be several years, but they do come and see us. And those are some of the properties, you know, Commissioner Jordan, that we are reluctant to send maybe for that reason and as well as the taxpayer has finally reached in our direction with some payment. Now, it's, you know, it's not resolving that account in full, but it's certainly an effort. And, and those are the properties we want to be aware of moving forward.
But how, how are we establishing minimum bid? Are we saying administrative cost or it probably is valued at $28,000? And we got, let's say, $5,000 already tied up in it, point, point into the acre. What is going to be our minimum bid hoping? How do we establish?
Yes, sir. All delinquent taxes, of course, and any related attorney fees is usually the minimum bid threshold. We, we are not, you know, below that naturally regardless of that property in and of itself with value. We are retaining what we've already invested as North County. You know, if we've got 5,000 naturally, our minimum bid is generally not 2,500. We are at least establishing that minimum bid. And, and in some cases, we've gone above the minimum bid on that one property I'm familiar with, on that 32, that the lesser property, that went almost double of what, you know, and so that, that was a willing, a taxpayer willing citizen, if you will, who really desired that property. So all different sorts of variables set what ultimately bid, you know, tails. But we don't drop below that naturally with minimum bid.
We're not looking at the assessed value.
That is correct, yeah. Yes, sir.
The cover I have.
That is true, yes ma'am.
And during the process of the rebound, nothing, these properties were treated just like standard properties, nothing, is anything done any differently in a rebound you were there?
No, no, no differently. Some of the properties that are vacant, certainly we might have an older abandoned brick house, if you will, with minimal value and we, we're doing the field work, we may not be aware of all of those properties in foreclosure, particularly during our visit at that time. We're looking at general characteristics and condition of that property, not really, you know, determining the foreclosure status as being an appraisal or market standpoint, if you will. We do try and make a note certainly if it's an abandoned dwelling or something going on that we need to know about. It really doesn't affect any of that control once with that.
Any comments? Thank you, continue to do the good work and continue to collect the stuff.
Oh, yes ma'am. Thank Lori, Shelly, Betty, everybody for all their hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. If apartments, any questions about any reports, anyone read? The new format for the, the suspension charges and revenues, and that is a little bit more difficult to read.
Yeah, I agree.
If the headings were highlighted a little bit, lucky to keep helping.
As we have discussed, that's what's in the system and we are still learning the system, so.
But we can work out, put in some headline, bold titles.
We don't create those reports, that, that's what we're saying. We're, we're trying to learn how to use the system so that we can get the information out as we expressed last month as well. And we will, we are going to try to work on those reports, but as you are aware, we are short in that office at this time, so we are doing the best we can.
And I didn't, I wouldn't, I, I see Mrs. Henderson is in our accordion. Our things going well with the mail-in item of the water bill system.
They were mailed out at this time.
Okay.
It's still a work in progress, I'd say.
Okay. Just so we've got something going on.
Yes, we do.
I would go on collections. You know, we didn't send out any deals for the previous month, but are your collections up to date basically as they would have been?
Yes, yes, sir.
Great. And a lot of people came in, paid and they...
They did. They contacted, the software companies sent out postcards to all the legal customers stating they could contact us to come in if not. There were no service fees, there were no leave fees, there were no disconnects. Everything just rolled right over to May. And when it came for the end of May, it was just the usual number four, service fees and disconnects.
Okay, great. Okay, going through, I have a, one article in Enders Lori, so I think we have a thank you card from, and I'll read it. It says, "We wish to express our sincere thanks for your friendship, kindness, and prayers during this time of great sorrow. The family of William Heywood Carroll." You remember, he passed away and we, the family was here last month to receive a proclamation from us. Okay, well, nothing else on the administrative reports. We'll move on to public hearings. And do I have a motion to go into a public hearing for the budget for fiscal year 18, 19?
So moved.
Motion's been made, you'll have a second.
Yes, second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. At this time, we're in public hearing for the Gates County budget for 2018, 2019. Has anyone, has anyone signed up to speak? Does anyone have in the, at the last minute would like to speak about the budget? Okay, there is no public comment. Do I have a motion to come out of public hearing?
So moved, seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I would have a motion now to approve the county...
If you, if you decide you do want to approve it today, that's presented, you can, then we will not have a June 18 meeting. It has been advertised, but it was advertised to straight on the budget in case there were changes proposed today and for budget amendments.
Okay, so we'll wait till June 18, I guess.
If it's been advertised, I believe that'd be proper.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Chairman.
Ma'am, I apologize for stepping in late. I had a very important phone call at 10:00 hours, 10 o'clock from my granddaughter who turned five today. She's also graduating from kindergarten in Greensboro. And her name is Sally Louise and she carries both grandmothers names, so Sally Louise Dupont is her name. So I was back there in the back enjoying all that. I almost didn't come out. Lives that way.
Well, I think we will excuse you because it was a five-year-old.
Something like that, yeah.
We won't make you run laps or anything this time.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes.
Some things take priority.
Absolutely.
And family should be number one. Okay, do I have a motion to go into public hearing for, well, do we have to go into public hearing for the installation, installment financing contract for central middle school?
Chairman, I'm moved that we go into a public hearing for that matter.
Okay.
And I second the motion, ma'am, chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, we have with us Wes, Ted Cole, Ted Cole from Davenport. Would you like to speak to the matter?
Be happy to. Good morning. I'm Ted Cole with Davenport and Company and we serve as financial advisors to the county on this project financing. And I have, each of you should have a memo in front of you, it's stapled, it's about six pages that I thought I'd walk through and then I'd be happy to answer questions along the way or, or otherwise. As was noted in the manager's report earlier, the county has met with the local government commission in Raleigh to appraise them of this financing and the project. They told us to keep moving forward and so this is the first official action for you all. Once the public hearing is completed, there will be a resolution for you all to consider, which is the first of two actions by the county board to move the process forward. As I understand it, the schools received the bids last week, the construction manager at risk, Chesson, was sort of leading that process. And so all of this is kind of coming together. As it relates to the financing, what we're talking about doing is an installment purchase contract. Essentially, that's a loan with a lender that will be secured by the school, a mortgage on the facility. We did a request for proposal and sent it out to a number of banks and lenders and you'll see on page one of the memo, we received proposals back from six different lenders. Some of those you will recognize their names, others you will not recognize the names, but I can assure you that all of these firms we have dealt with and they bid on local government financings quite regularly, so they may not be, have branches in the county or, or in some cases even branches in the state, but they are active bidders on local government debt. Flipping to page two, we have summarized at the top the interest rate proposals that they received and given what we have, we understand the project bids to be, what I would direct your, I would direct your attention on page two in the upper chart to column I, which is the 20-year term from Sterling Bank, well, 20-year term in an amount not to exceed $8.2 million. That's a not to exceed. Our expectation would be based on what we understand the project bids to be and the issuance cost that will come in underneath that, but the approval is a not to exceed. We can always come down. And what's called non-VQ or NVQ, which is IRS designation for the debt, whether or not you issue more than $10 million in a given calendar year. And you should look to Sterling National Bank there on line three, their interest rate of a 3.90. Ultimately, you will see that's our recommendation to move forward with Sterling at a 3.9%. That would be fixed for the entire 20-year term. There is a footnote there on their 3.90 and, and that is, the explanation there is that what Sterling had proposed is if you want that 3.90 rate, they would like to hold the funds at their, with, with the bank during construction. So in other words, we close on the loan, the money stays with Sterling, it's invested to your benefit and you requisition the funds from them as the project moves forward. We have done that before with other North Carolina counties. We have gone back and talked to the local government commission in Raleigh and they are okay with that, provided that the bond attorney for the county here is willing to give an opinion that that is permitted. And we have talked to Sterling and they have told us that that 3.90 rate is good either way. In other words, if we can get to a place where the LGC and bond counsel are, permit the funds to be held there, that is just fine. We'll have all of that done and as I've said, we've done that before. If for some reason either bond counsel or the local government commission would prefer that the money not stay with Sterling and for example, go to the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, which is where a lot of loan proceeds go, Sterling has said they'll still honor the 3.90. So we've got flexibility either way if we can get all of this lined up with the LGC and, and we talked with them this morning, as recently as this morning. So the 3.90 is the rate, one way or the other. And you'll see that the, the next best bid on the 20-year term was a 4.1% from Capital One and a 4.43 from Key. Not everybody was able to commit to the 20-year term. So 20 years at an amount not to exceed 8.2 million. It would be designated as non-bank qualified, which gives you lots of flexibility if there were a need in the remainder of the calendar year to do any additional debt. I don't, my understanding is that's not the plan, but if there were a need to, you would be able to do that without impacting this loan or this interest rate. The bottom of page two, we lay out the prepayment provisions and, and I think I'll just speak to Sterling. Every bank looks at the prepayment provisions a little bit differently. Typically, what Sterling says for a 20-year loan is that for the first five years, it's non-prepayable, you can't prepay it. And then in years six through 10, they'll allow you to prepay it either in whole or in part, so the whole amount outstanding or a partial of it with a 1% penalty. And then after year 10, you can do it without any penalty. And that's a pretty, you know, pretty typical prepayment language, but you will see when you look at some of the other banks, some of them are more stringent, some of them are less stringent. When we looked at all of these things combined, the interest rate, their terms and conditions and their prepayment language, again, you'll see at the top of page three that that's our recommendation would be to move forward with Sterling. Let me stop there, just if there are any questions about the RFP process or anything that I've said this morning that you want some clarification on.
Yes, if Sterling holds the proceeds of the loan, would they pay any interest?
Yes, they will pay you all interest and they also would have to post a surety bond to secure the deposit. And the question that the local government commission has that they want to sort through with the bond attorney is whether that is in sync with the state statutes essentially, that that works from the bond attorney's perspective. And assuming that it does and that the bond attorney will give that opinion at closing, then we could close, hold the money at Sterling, you will earn interest and there will also be a surety bond that's posted to secure the deposit. If for some reason bond counsel or the LGC isn't comfortable, we'll still close the loan with Sterling and you'll have discretion on where you would want to put those funds. Like I said, typically, if bond proceeds, if not held at the bank, would go to the North Carolina Capital Management Trust.
Ted, just for the audience and for our constituents there, we'll see this on camera later. This is our second briefing on this for the full board, so we've all seen this one time before. Just want the audience to know that we're not seeing each for the first time.
Yeah, that's a very good... Yeah, that's a very good point. We did receive six bids. And we looked at each of those bids, one way or the other. Fifteen-year term, twenty-year term, an eight point two million dollar borrowing or something closer to five and a half. And so this morning's presentation, we have streamlined that a bit to really focus on the proposal that we had previously discussed as the most likely option or preferred option.
Madam Chairman, I would like to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Jordan's question, jumping back to when you first mentioned to us about whether or not LGC would accept Sterling's, if they want to keep the money in escrow or.
Right.
What's been your experience with LGC versus?
We've only run into it in one place in North Carolina where the same question was before them. And the LGC was comfortable with it because the bond council on that transaction gave the opinion that they believe that it was consistent with state statutes. So the LGC really relied on the attorney's opinion. And we have asked Mary Nash Rusher with McGuire Woods, who is working with you all, to review that opinion from that other transaction. Let us know if she'd be comfortable giving that opinion. And my expectation would be if she is comfortable, that the LGC will accept that. And again, it would also carry the surety bond with it. And this is a, this is, some banks don't have to do that. Some banks participate in what's called the state treasurer's collateralization pool, where they secure deposits through collateralization of securities. It just so happens that Sterling does not participate in that. But the alternative would be to post that surety bond as collateral. So it will turn, I suspect, on the bond attorney's willingness to give that opinion. But either way, Sterling has confirmed that we are good to close on the loan at that rate. Thank you.
Also, for the public, the five point five million, when you could have thought about it originally or if we could, the bids came in for Central School. And we could not build school unless we borrowed the eight million. So that's why we didn't consider the law or not.
So I was talking off of the top of page three. And we stated our recommendation for Sterling, twenty years and an amount not to exceed eight point two. That would be fixed for twenty years at a three ninety. I have shown you at the bottom of page three, the sources and uses. Essentially, what these numbers demonstrate on line seven is that eight million dollars would be made available to you all for the project. And that, in addition to the money that you've received or the schools have received from the state, should be sufficient to fund the entire project as recently bid. And the cost of issuance allowance there, again, my expectation, when all of this settles out in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to come in underneath that allowance. We just want to make sure, because remember, what's serving as collateral for this loan is the school. We just want to make sure that we're in good shape with all the real estate related matters that have to accompany putting a mortgage on that facility. But I, my expectation would be that that would come down. And we might end up closer to eight point one or eight point one five million. And we'll know a little more about that when we come back to you for the second approval, which would be on July second. So once this presentation is over, the public hearing is closed, there is a resolution that bond council has drafted for you all, called a findings resolution. Lays out some of the specifics of the loan, authorizes staff to submit an application to the local government commission. That's the first of the two approvals. And then we would come back on July second for what's called an issuance resolution for your consideration. And in that resolution is where more of the nuts and bolts of the actual loan with Sterling would be memorialized. I do want to address on page four, which is the landscape page here, just so that everybody is on the same page. This is sort of the work that we've been doing with staff to demonstrate the repayment plan for this debt service. On the right-hand side of page four is a chart that shows under column C, the estimated debt service for this loan with Sterling. Debt service starts in FY nineteen. It's a partial year payment. You'll see that's about one hundred and seventy thousand. And then it steps up in fiscal year twenty to about seven hundred and twenty thousand. And then it steps down every year. That is the debt structure that we discussed with the local government commission, and they were fine with that. So column C is the payment schedule that we will have. It will get fine-tuned. You know, this isn't final, but it's a very good estimate. And what we've identified with staff is that essentially this debt service will be repaid with Article forty-four sales tax revenues, which we've shown in column E as, let's call it, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. We have not grown that revenue. We've held it flat for the time being for planning purposes. And the other thing I would note is way over on the right in column G is that over the last few years, the county has accumulated some of the Article forty-four sales tax to the tune of about nine hundred and seventy thousand. And what you're going to see when we have the debt service payment we need to make, the annual Article forty-four sales tax plus the Article forty-four sales tax revenue that you've accumulated, we have the dollars necessary to repay this debt service. There are a few years that you'll see under column F, as in Frank, where the current year Article forty-four sales tax revenue is not sufficient by itself. But those accumulated dollars can be used to supplement the debt service budget. And column G never drops below, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand or so. So it's just going to be a sort of an annual budgetary process for you all to be dedicating the Article forty-four sales tax from the current year and then supplementing it for a few years with some of those accumulated dollars. But all of this, based on these projections, can be done without necessitating a real estate tax increase of any sort. The Article forty-four, if it comes in as projected, should be sufficient. Is that helpful?
And I'd like to see this light to hear that it's not going to help profit taxes to go.
Right. And then on the final page, page five, and I've already alluded to some of this. We're working with staff. County manager in particular has been working on the LGC application. The goal would be to get that in by the end of the week. And I think we're in good shape to do that today. What we'd be looking, well, obviously withholding the public hearing. There is a findings resolution for you all to consider. And then we would look to just get confirmation from the board that you want to move forward with Sterling under that twenty-year proposal. If all of that happens, then we'll be back on July second for that issuance resolution that I mentioned. The local government commission will approve this or consider approving this on July tenth. And if all of that comes together, we'd be in a position to close the loan by July twentieth. And that's the date at which you would have the funds in hand, either at Sterling or some other depository. And you would be able to, one, reimburse yourselves for any money you've already spent and have dollars available for project costs going forward.
Those meetings now that we're going forward, Ted, one of you could probably answer this. None of those will be hearing-type meetings?
The one on the sixth, I mean, the second.
The second will be a public hearing.
Well, but there may be a public hearing, but not on, not on that resolution.
Right.
It'll be a board, official board action. But this is the only public hearing needed on the financing. And then I'm going to, one of the other things that we'll cross-check with bond council is whether we need any, any action from the school board as it relates to providing the school as collateral. And I'll follow up with the county manager on that.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Any additional questions? Okay, at this time? Okay, any additional comments for the public? Questions? Okay, at this time, do I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, at this time, you have in your packet, a finding resolution, the Board of Commissioners of Gates County, that we saw on our previous meeting. But we have a copy of it again. I'll entertain a motion to proceed with this finding. Do you think you should read it?
It's three pages.
I know, it's three pages.
Madam Chairman, it is our second time seeing this document. And I believe we are, we're calling it a finding. Make a motion that we approve and accept this finding, this document before us this morning.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion.
Another what we're doing is adopting that finding right there.
Correct. They go to, go to the LGC for the eight point two. And we are going to be using Sterling.
And all that's included in the same motion that we are using the winning voter.
And then we have the no one that did you like with you. Okay. Any other discussion?
Just, just notes on the third page. It has the votes that need to be recorded.
Yes.
I haven't seen that form on a document like this. Okay, Madam Chairman, I'll call for the vote.
Okay, and since they make sure that we have it, we'll start at, we'll do a voice vote, starting with Commissioner Freeman.
Aye. I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye. So the resolution passes five to zero. Thank you. And we look forward to seeing.
See you on July second.
Okay. That completes our public hearings. Is there any old business to be brought before us? Okay, moving on to new business. Emergency medical service appointments to the Gates County, or Gates Community Child Protection Team. I think Ms. Holly, that is, and you'll be able to expertise. That's going to be number eight.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, for the commissioners. I am requesting, on behalf of the Gates County Emergency Child Protection Team, appointment of Mr. Stormy Butts, who serves as Gates County Emergency Medical Services Chief. He pointed out to us during our May seventeenth meeting that there is a difference between the Gates County Emergency Management Services Director and himself. And Mr. Butts had been attending the Gates County CCPT meetings for quite some time, or a dozen years. So his name was not listed under the membership. But we do have Director Billy Wynn's name listed under the CCPT membership. So I am requesting appointment of Mr. Butts, according to North Carolina General Statute, seven B fourteen oh seven. And I believe that was attached to a memo dated May seventeenth. And it is on page six. On C, it says, in addition, a local team that reviews the records of additional child fatalities shall include the following, five additional members. Number one, an emergency medical services provider or firefighter appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. So that is why I'm here for you today.
Okay, so you would like us to appoint Stormy Butts to your committee?
Yes.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
What is the pleasure for him?
Yes, Madam, I would do a motion on that.
Yes.
And I would make the motion that Stormy Butts, following your recommendation to the board, be appointed on the Child Protection Team. I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made properly seconded in discussion. What is the term?
Oh, it's not, it's indefinite.
It's forever and ever.
Yes, it's in play.
Okay, I've been on this topic for this too.
Madam Chairman, I would just like to clarify that Stormy is Mr. Butts, that's his name?
Yes, Stormy Butts.
Okay.
That's how it spells also on the county website, I believe. Stormy, am I correct?
That's true. That's the only thing I've ever.
That's all I've seen.
But it's his name.
That's his legal name.
It's his legal name.
Yes, and I also would like to add that he explained the difference between, and both referred to as Gates County EMS. You have Gates County Emergency Management and Gates County Emergency Medical. When you think about Mr. Butts' role, Chief Butts' role, you're thinking about the rescue squad and the medical. But when we think about Mr. Wynn with the management, you're talking about your safety, your floods, and your fire. So both of them are valuable to our community.
And for the committee investigating for child's death.
Yes, and it's likely that Emergency Medical would be responding, you know, if it was a health issue or some type of injury or whatever anyway.
Okay, a motion's been made and properly seconded in discussion. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
So you can inform Stormy. Okay, number eight, we have some budget amendments before us.
Okay, number thirty-six is from the sheriff's office to reallocate money to cover a shortfall in the inmate medical expense. Thirty-seven is to move money within the Genesis Grant Program to now cover items under other services as requested now by the state. And thirty-eight is to move some money to purchase some items that during the election time, they've had some difficulty with. And they want to go ahead and purchase them now based upon discussions with elections and to assist with next year's budget.
Now, thirty-six and thirty-seven, we got that blanked far away.
Thirty-eight is on your packet. And you've also received that electronically. Our money is being moved within departments.
And typically, at the end of the budget, you would get a lot of people changing the funds from one place to another. What is the pleasure for him?
Madam Chairman, I believe the motion that we approved of the amendments thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, as you present.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made and properly seconded in discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of budget amendments thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? They all approve.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Looking at number thirty-eight, the explanation there. I know that we don't control the board of elections, but being very interested to know about the disposal of that computer.
That computer's still county property. So if it is disposed of the same way, all others will be.
Okay, a lot of confidential information.
But hard drives are always removed, no matter which department.
Have we already taken possession of that?
That computer is still still on desk. I just got this yesterday.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam.
Good luck.
Well, it's good to know that all the hard drives are removed.
Yes, cause Warren, make sure those are all removed and destroyed.
Go, Warren. You're talking, looking nice for us. Okay, next one is a, going through, you know, we have a policy, trying to codify our policies. And I'll, and we can't process. And as I was looking at it, I thought maybe we might need to make sure everybody's on the same page and.
Those we're looking at, huh?
It is in your packet. She brought me the copy this morning. It's in the information that was laying in the packet that was laid after this. It's possibly the last document.
Oh, yeah.
And sometimes there's some inconsistencies in the way that we are doing things. It's just we're codifying our policies. I thought we might need to make sure that we try. I thought we might need to make sure that we try to clarify, um, all those. Make sure everything is being done the same for everyone. For, um, well, we, if, this, if you look, Gates County will provide at its expense, medical insurance coverage for elected officials who are retired or otherwise honorable separated from the office, October ninth, twenty thirteen, subject to the following. And these are the provisions of that. And I think we probably need to look at these to make sure that we are doing that. If you look at the first one, it says, "Elected officials must have served full, full consecutive terms in Gates County." Elected officials covered under this is the Board of Commissioners, Sheriff, and Registered Deeds. I do have a concern concerning that. You know, for our commissioners, we have part-time workers, even though we put in a lot of hours. We're not, it's not like the Registered Deeds is a full-time position, the Sheriff's a full-time position. And to, I know you say you would give us insurance, I believe, for four years, four consecutive terms. Well, that's sixteen years. However, someone becomes a former member in their twenties and serves, let's say, at twenty-five and serves to forty-one, then the county would be paying their insurance for the rest of that time. That is a burden, I think, on the county with the cost of insurance. I also have a problem with them paying the insurance while you're serving as commissioner. If I agree you leave the job, I think that's over with. It's a part-time job. That's just my feelings on that.
Madam Chairman, is this, uh, something that we're presenting to the board now?
No, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up to, because if, when we were codifying, going through those policies, I saw this, and I just wanted us to think like, you know, that in the, in the aspect of the cost of the county over a number of years, life expectancy, uh, seventy-seven, eighty years, somebody retires, then you, you know, that could be... I'm just thinking back from the financial form.
Sure, I understand what you're saying. I just, there's already a provision that the previous boards put in place.
This is the provision, sir. This is the provision that was updated on October the ninth of two thousand seventeen. That is this provision.
Two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen.
Well, it was two thousand thirteen, but part of it was amended on two thousand seventeen.
It just came out of, out of board minutes?
Yes, sir. This is a policy that was approved by the board. And this was also something that was mentioned in the MAP study. That was something that Becky Beezy pointed out that that could be extended, I don't like saying it could be, a very large amount of money if someone, like she said, was elected when they're in their twenties, thirties, or even their forties and served sixteen years with the rising cost of healthcare. It was also alluded to in the audit, not just with elected officials, but also with just the rising cost of insurance. Our policy says that anyone who works for twenty consecutive years for Gates County and retires will have their insurance paid for. And they were making suggestions on what we should do going forward to make sure that there is money to cover that as well. So that is just two of the underlying issues that Ms. Hopper has, Chair Hopper has brought this up as well. And also, what I would like to do is, once we finalize the personnel policy to bring it forward, I would like to put this in the personnel policy so it's easier for everyone to find and to keep up with, because now it's a standalone policy.
Now, based on B, there's an exemption there for that, but I see a B, is that correct?
Well, that's when a retired employee that covers under this benefit becomes eligible for Medicare, the county medical plan coverage becomes secondary. You know, I know as a retired school teacher, as soon as you hit that sixty-five, they pick you up and put you on, it goes to Medicare and they do something. You know, you don't stay on. It's automatic, it's no choice. Ray, I imagine with you with SBI?
Taylor?
Same way.
It is, and I, Commissioner Jordan, when he made mention of B, I was looking at F there too. In personnel policy, would, we always want to have something to change any moment.
That's the way a personnel policy is.
It's our policy. Do you think we should even think about that or review that to some stage?
You've not approved a new personnel policy.
Well, I mean, Gates County Board of Commissioners may amend or field its policies at any time.
That's pretty standard language on those governmental policies. Otherwise, you could never make any changes.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to comprehend is that we're bringing this up to make us aware of what the current provisions are, not to implement anything different in particular kind of step.
Well, it's for your information, and I, and I would think that we would need, I would like to see us make a change, but I'm just bringing it up today for FYI. Uh, I'm not trying to spring anything on you, but I think that that is something that we should consider. The cost of this, um, is, could be a tremendous burden for the county at the length of, I know it's put in, I can, but, you know, we're part-time workers, folks. Anyway, I'm writing it. And I don't see any of you serve sixteen years that the county owes you insurance coverage for the rest of your life.
Well, we don't want to put our citizens in a position where someone wants to run for office. And, um, if they want to do that, and maybe they may have to give up something to run for office. They've noticed.
I'm not saying they not give it to them while they are active and active.
Well, I think today is for this FYI, for today's meeting, right?
Right. But I'm just saying, as long as you're serving as a commissioner, I have no problem with people, the insurance being paid. However, once you leave this job, I don't think the county owes us the insurance for life. That's just my deal.
How about overtime?
I agree with you. As you know, I didn't accept the county insurance anywhere, because I am on Medicare. And I felt like it was completely wrong for me to charge the county for services that were already covered under Medicare. And I would certainly go along with, after someone reaches that sixty-five and goes on Medicare, that county would drop coverage. It's a, it's double difference, it's an extra seventy-five dollars here per person that the carriage of it would pay. I'll give it.
Okay, but like I say, this is for your information, and since we're codifying, we've done this MAP study. I think that we should try to have it in the policy so that we would, everybody could look at it and see it at each time. Okay, anything else anybody else has in their comments?
Are you requesting this be put back on the agenda at a specified date?
I think yes, go ahead. I, I would like to see if we talk about it again in July, so that everybody has thought about it.
Is there anything else that we need to see? Would this be all of it?
That's the only policy, that's the only policy that covers you.
And that, um... You made a comment that people who serve, I mean, that serve the county and, or workers of the county, they get insurance, we pay for their insurance, like how many years?
Twenty consecutive years.
Twenty consecutive years.
But then, once they get re, once they reach the age where they're eligible for Medicare, they go into Medicare plan, and we play, and we pay the cost of that supplement.
And what is the cost of that supplement?
It varies based on your age and plan.
Is twenty years a standard?
No, many places have stopped providing that benefit to retirees after they're hired after a certain date. Some I've seen go back as far as two thousand eight. And a lot have recently, over the past four to five years, stopped providing that benefit to new employees.
Twenty years seems kind of short time, right?
That has to be twenty consecutive. Yeah, our plan is very specific about that. So if you're here at five, then you transfer to another county, and then you come back, your time starts over.
Hey, we certainly want to look after our employees.
Oh, yeah, we want to look after our employees. I, I agree, right. And, and all, but...
I think all of that fits, right?
Yeah. But we also got to pay for these benefits. And we need to make sure that we are setting aside money to have a reserve fund. Well, I don't know how you can do it, but...
And we are not doing that.
Right, the only compliment is this board right here.
Yeah, this, well, this is just talking about this board right here.
But I was, I was kind of talking overall, you know, about, you know, we talked about twenty years.
And one thing, if I may, that has come up, but is not in this policy, but I have seen it in other policies for elected officials is if that, if a sheriff or a registered deeds, because that's, other counties only cover them after retirement, that if they go to work for another agency, that other agency or other entities' insurance is primary. It is not the county's insurance.
That makes sense.
And that's something to consider too. If you could get us some information concerning that?
What do you want?
What type of insurance does the Board of Education provide?
I have no idea. What type of information do you want?
I was wanting to help concerning the high level spray supply if they went to work.
Okay, the language, okay, I do have a policy or two that I have to say.
And we could chat, I, I can chat, and you can chat with the Board of Education concerning what they do, concerning their members.
But regarding, do they also look at their travel policies? Do they do that for education? Do we need to know what their travel policy is as well?
Um, I'm sure.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna ask about that, I think, a bit. An opportunity to have to look at, at all of them, see what happens.
Is, would you like to put that to be included? Does that consist?
Well, I got older to go.
Yeah, sure. Oh, yeah, I thought we were dealing with, but sure, it's, uh... They make the rules about their travel, I think.
We don't pay the travel, other than...
Yeah, I think they make the rules for their own travel. And I think they have to go by state guidelines, about mileage or federal mileage and all that.
Are you going to come to meetings itself, or just...
Just their, their policies for the board. Since we're looking at board here, and we're thinking about making some revisions, I think it'd be nice to have it spread across the board for Gates County as opposed to, um, I know the diet.
Of course, of course, we have no control over their, their policy, but I guess we could, we can ask to just look, that we're looking at ours. I don't know. Okay, so this is for your information, and, um, like I say, and we do need to make some provisions for, um, to pay for this, because of the money's going to come from somewhere. Okay, is there any other new business? Any comments from citizens? I think this is a record book.
You're not finished yet.
Not finished yet. Any comments from citizens? Okay, um, Commissioner's comments. I'll start down here this time, and, uh, the date's June sixth. And it's a very important date in American history. Seventy-four years ago, the DVA invasion occurred, the invasion of Normandy, and for the liberation of Europe. And of course, we have people in county, or I've had people in county, hopefully some of them still alive, who participated. And those of you who've watched the movies, um, what movie, um, was Tom Hanks in it, about DVA. It certainly was a, you know, those people were faced with certain doubt as they stormed the shores of Normandy. And we owe them a big gratitude, so that we sat here today and discussed policies and things for the county. So let's never forget our benefits and the cost that they gave, along gave their lives for us to have freedoms we do today. Thank you for coming. Hopefully, we have taken care of some business for the county today.
It's good to be here, and it's good to set records. It's like today's gonna be one of them, so, anyway, good to be here. Thank you for your participation in the process, and look forward to seeing you again.
All right, well, I think I'm coming. I, I will take the, uh, the award today for a number of maximum constituents. Billy, I'd like to have Mr. Stoller. I thank all my constituents for being out today and sunbathing here. And, uh, I hope you have a great day, and I hope we've done something today that will be a great blessing to the county.
Madam Chairman, I appreciate you mentioning Normandy, and that's something that a lot of people just forget. The greatest generation, and if that had gone the other way, we might be pledging allegiance to the flag of Germany now. And it's just glad that you mentioned that, and I appreciate everybody's participation. But as we mentioned before, we, what we have done today will benefit Gates County in the future.
Certainly appreciate everyone's attention and bringing things forth. As you see, we had some very important visits today, even though they didn't last very long, but we learned a lot from Davenport as how our system works and how the local government also controls our money and keeps an eye on the language we use and build various things with, in this particular case, schools. And I want to thank all my fellow commissioners for paying attention to the things that go on with the citizens that contact us and, uh, and address issues with us. And I know they're bringing to the county manager, we hear them, county manager hears them. And, uh, and we appreciate it, because without that, we don't really understand what's happening. So we do appreciate that, and, uh, thank you having to do that.
Okay, do you have a motion to the chairman?
So move, sir.
Motion made in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.